Being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on October 14th, 2025. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by Constable Adam Swift on October 23rd, 2025. I declare therefore that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws and the Town of, and Chapter 39, I'm carrying that flag, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The moderator and the town clerk have appointed the following tellers for this meeting. Left side, Sherri Constant; right side, Rita Garbit; center rear, Debbie Cranefris, Cranefris, and a center front and stage, David Zalonis. All have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the general town's general bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. The town of Lakeville relies upon the volume "town meeting time" as the standard of conduct for all Lakeville town meetings. We will continue this precedent. When you came in and registered, you should have received a copy of the warrant. Before we continue, I'd like to make sure that everyone has a copy. If you don't have a copy, please raise your hand, and we will make sure we get one to you. So, I see no hands raised. Okay, excellent. On the warrant are articles that alert us to the business that we're going to conduct this evening. We vote on motions, not articles. For an article to be considered, someone must first make a motion, and then that motion must be seconded. For articles added by town boards, a member of that board will make the first motion. For citizens' petitions, it is appropriate for the person initiating that petition to make the first motion. By precedent, the maker of the motion has the first opportunity to speak about it. I will then solicit the Finance Committee's recommendation and any other pertinent committee recommendation, such as the Planning Board. Following their statements, any registered voter is welcome to come to a microphone and speak to the article. We vote when discussion is complete. There are two microphones, as you'll see, located to the left and the right. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized, please state your name and your address. If you have a motion or an amendment to a motion, please have it prepared in writing. After stating your motion, you'll present it to me. All discussions should be directed through the moderator. That is, comments should not be directed at each other or other people on the floor. I'll direct the question to the appropriate person as necessary. I generally do not limit how long you may speak, but please keep your comments focused and within the article's scope. Discussion must be specific to what the motion proposes, and not introduce something new outside of it. That's called keeping things within the scope. I'll exercise my prerogative to keep the meeting moving, and may interject to encourage a speaker to wrap up a commentary if it's going on too long. I'll also ask that the speaker only approach the microphone if you have something new or pertinent to add. It's not necessary to repeat points that have already been made. Please be respectful, and do not make your comments personal. Admittedly, some topics carry strong opinions, but any member who disrupts the meeting in an unacceptable way will be escorted out and may not return. Every vote matters, do not lose yours. Now, let's talk about amendments. An amendment seeks to improve, clarify, or alter a motion before it's voted on. Amendments may seek to add or strike out words, or even replace a section with new wording. So, an amendment makes a change to an existing motion, and it's allowable as long as it remains within scope or does not violate a law. It requires a second, and it may be debated. We will vote on amendments to a motion before voting on the original motion. To keep things from getting confusing, we're going to decide the merits of only one amendment at a time. Amendments require a majority vote, and then they must be presented in writing to the town clerk. The town clerk does have a form that you can use if you didn't bring it in writing ahead of time to fill in if you need it. Points of order. If you have a point of order, you can stand and loudly state that from your seat. You don't have to come to a microphone. To clarify, points of order are limited to whether the speaker has the right to the floor, or whether the speaker is saying or proposing something irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper parliamentary procedure. Calling the question ends debate. Attempts to call the question before discussion as a tactical move to prevent debate will not be accepted by the moderator. If you would like to call the question, you must be at a microphone, and only call the question. In other words, you can't state your point of view and then call the question to shut everybody else up. Voting cards. When a motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up your yellow-colored voting card that you received when you checked in. Do not lose the voting card, it cannot be replaced. During voting, please keep your voting cards held up until I ask you to lower them. If I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I'll ask you to lower the card. However, if I need to have a count by the tellers, I'll ask you to keep them up, and then we'll lower them when we're done with the counting. For consistency, we are always going to vote with the cards. Your voting card has a yes and a no printed on it. This is not, you don't have to hold up the yes side or the no side depending on how you feel. It's only used for a balloted vote, and if we ever had to go to that, I would give you instructions on how we would use it then. Motions to reconsider. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that would have caused members to vote otherwise if that information had been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because a lot of people have left, and you think it's going to change the vote. That's a parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider requires two-thirds vote and can only be made once. We ask that cell phones, I'm going to check mine, make sure that mine is turned off, be turned on silent, and it is on silent. It would be terrible if mine went off, I was lecturing you. Lake Cam is recording this meeting, and we'll make it available online. Now, at this time, we traditionally recognize those members of the community who have served our town in public office and who have passed away since the last town meeting. Please stand, if you can, and offer a moment of silence for the following people. Joseph C. Seamus Jr. Although not in public office, we would like to also recognize that Mr. Seamus served as a history teacher, guidance counselor, assistant principal, and principal of Aponequit Regional High School from 1960 to 1992. He also served as interim superintendent of schools from 1979 to 1980. He was on the Aponequit Regional High School additions and renovation building project 98 to 2001, the Aponequit Regional High School Media Center and Tech Classroom addition from 1989 to 1990. He was a member of the Finance Committee from 1993 to 2004, and the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School Committee from 2005 to 2014. Norma R. Robey, Town of Lakeville payroll clerk, 1973 to 1998. Robert C. Bouchard, Growth Study Committee in 1993, Water Study Board 2002 to 2011, Project Review Committee for 2020 to 2021, that was for 43D, Conservation Commission 1997 to 2024, Part-Time Conservation Agent 2024, and Cable Advisory Committee 2021 to 2024. Beverly A. Ingram, Election Officer 2008 to 2025. Pauline Ashley, Planning Board Secretary 1998 to 2018, Town Employee Part-Time Clerk from 1999 to 2018, Election Officer 2008 to 2020, Police Station Review Committee 2016 to 2017, and the Police Station Building Committee 2016 to 2020. Please remain standing to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Now, I'm going to introduce the members of the town seated upon the stage. We have Lily and Drain, Town Clerk; Greg Corbo, Town Council; Maureen Candido, Select Board Chair; Paul Hunt, Select Board Member; Christopher Plonka, Select Board Member; Lorraine Carbone, Select Board Member; Andrew Sukforth, who is the Town Administrator; and Michael Ellis, the Finance Director. Then we have Darren Beals, Finance Committee Chair; Barbara Mankowski, Finance Committee; Larry Constant, Finance Committee; Michael Wright, Finance Committee; and Justice Tanoni, Finance Committee. The following non-residents may be asked to speak tonight. I will first seek to pass them as a group, but if anyone wishes to hold a name out, please shout "hold" from your seat. Greg Corbo, Town Council; Andrew Sukforth, Town Administrator; Erica Correa, Town Treasurer Collector; Franklin Moniz, Lakeville Superintendent of Streets; Jennifer Jones, Lakeville Library Director; Lori Fahey, Lakeville Counseling on Aging Director. I need a motion and a second from a member of our community to allow them to speak.
So may.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Any opposed? Thank you. Now, I seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Any opposed? Thank you. We've agreed to waive the reading of the warrant, so on to Article 1.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $814.50 from free cash and $546.27 from Park Commission retained earnings to pay for unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year as shown in the warrant.
I need to hear a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Okay, we need a copy of that. You may speak to it.
Yes. So, there are a few unpaid bills from the previous fiscal year for veterans. Veterans reimbursement for $351 from free cash. Police Department, MNS Automotive, $35 from free cash. Human Resources, Advantage Drug Testing, $235 from free cash. Human Resources, Avoya Benefits, $78 free cash. Information Technology, Green River Associates Incorporated, $115.50 from free cash. Parks Commission, Jason Gas Services Inc., $546.27 from retained earnings for a total of $1,360.77.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
The floor is now open for discussion. Okay, we can move right to a vote. All those, this is a nine-tenths vote. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously.
I move that the town vote to amend the town code, Chapter 15, Boards and Committees, Article 7, Community Preservation Committee, Section 15, 24A6, to add language related to recommendations for resident-at-large member appointments as shown in bold in the warrant.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to this?
Sure, yes. So, the Community Preservation Committee, sorry, the Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval. This is looking to add eight words on page 2, as you see in bold. It just creates a process that the committee is able to recommend, a open resident-at-large seat to the select board, rather than having it up to the determination of whoever's chair at the time.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does not have a recommendation.
The select board has a recommendation. Does the select board have a recommendation?
Do we have a recommendation?
Yes.
It's typically voted in.
It was yes.
Favorable.
But we need to hear it.
Favorable.
The select board voted to recommend.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Okay, we can go to a vote on this. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Any opposed? The motion passes by majority vote. Article 3.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 for the design, study of renovations, and building updates necessary to facilitate the reuse of the Lakeville Fire Station and Town Hall located at 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass., and anything incidental or related thereto.
Thank you. Pass that to the town quick. Mr. Hunt, would you care to speak to it?
I would. We have a committee that has been formed for the reuse of that building now that the Fire Department project has moved forward. There needs to be a study done, and the fees related to that are an architect at $6,500, structural engineer at $3,500, hazmat and abatement at $2,500, a mechanical engineer evaluation at $4,000, and the project manager's fees of $8,200 for a total of $24,700, so that we can make a determination as to the proper reuse, and this particular article would fund those fees.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion.
One of the things that might be, yeah, Tickscott, Rush Pond Road. There might be a need for a needs analysis of saying what needs the town has for such a building as part of the scope, and I'm just wondering if somebody could speak to that.
Thank you. Mr. Sukforth, would you care to answer that?
So, part of the study is going to be internal. Myself and the HR Director and people on my staff internally to the Town Administrator's office will be doing a space needs assessment for town municipal departments as well. I think we're probably going to end up posting if there's any kind of external or quasi-public needs in the community, so that'll become in coordination with this. That's why this isn't as much money as a space needs assessment typically would go for.
Any other? Okay. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed? The motion passes by majority vote.
Article 4 is creation of department revolving funds for the Conservation Commission. I move the town amend the town code so as to add a new provision revolving funds, and to establish a revolving account for the Conservation Commission, and to approve Article 4 as shown in the warrant.
Thank you. I need a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Would you care to speak to this?
I would like Mike Ellis, the Finance Director, to speak to the revolving funds portion of this article.
So, by establishing this fund, this money will now go into a segregated fund. It's cumulative, it'll carry over year to year, and can be used for the items listed in the handbook. Currently, this money goes into the general fund and closes to free cash. That will no longer happen if this article passes. It'll be segregated and used for specific purposes related to conservation.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval.
Does the select board have a recommendation?
The select board did not make a, no, they did not recommend approval.
They made no recommendation. That's not a not, it's not a no, it's a not, making any recommendation, correct?
No, it's unfavorable.
Unfavorable. Unfavorable, okay. So, that's a no. Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion.
Nancy Yates, 19 Twin Oaks Road. I think the first thing I would like to do is to make an amendment. I'd like to make a motion for an amendment for the spending limit. When this first was written up, I had thought $10,000 would be like an amount that we would be taking in, and it went to Town Council and came back with a $15,000 amount, and by the time I spoke with Mike Ellis and we got the recommendations for what the actual figures were for the last five years, the average was $4,700. It went from $7,000 and something to $5,000 and something to $6,000 and something. Actually, in 2022, it was only $1,462. So, that would be an average of $4,700. So, I would like to make a motion to amend the spending limit to $7,500.
Thank you. Now, I need that in writing, Ms. Yates.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is a lower amount, it is allowed? Okay, so first, we're going to vote on, well, no, actually, we're going to open the floor up for discussion because we had a second. So, there is anybody who would like to come up and talk about this amendment lowering the amount to $7,500? Yes, Mr. Scott?
Madam Moderator, we've got the select board and the Financial Committee not in favor of this article, but I haven't heard any reason why their negative response to it. So, I think we've heard Nancy speak about lowering the sum, and I'm just wondering if they could elaborate on the why and whether the lowering the sum changes their mind.
Certainly. Ms. Candido?
I'll speak to it, but then I would like Mike Ellis to speak to his recommendation as well. The reason I personally wasn't in support of it, and the discussion on the board was not so much the amount, but it was more having less going into the general fund in a very lean year, and being concerned about making sure we make every dollar count towards the general fund this year.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, by approving it for the Conservation Committee, it then allows, it opens up the door for other organizations or other, sorry, other departments requesting it, so that's another reason.
Yes, and Mr. Ellis to speak as well?
The spending limit would, whether it was $15,000 or $7,500, I as town accountant would not allow any expenditures in excess of the spending cap, so lowering it does kind of bring it closer to actual, but we would want to set this fund closely and wouldn't allow it to be in a deficit regardless of the spending cap.
Thank you.
No comment. They answered the questions I was going to ask, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Bouchard, 82 County Street. Could you clarify for folks the way that the existing budget is that any fees or any fees that the commission, application fees, et cetera, takes in now are expendable, but if we move to the revolving funds, we then have that annual spending limit? So, if next year we take in $15,000, our new limit would be at $7,500 if we approved this. Could you just speak to the changes in how we're allowed to spend money that the commission collects now versus how we would spend money if we changed to a revolving fund?
So, I do want to add that the spending cap can change every year. It needs to be voted every year in June, so if we have a very strong year and we decide to move that spending limitation further, we can. That would happen in the spring for the following fiscal year. And you are correct, this allows spending flexibility. So, right now, the funds sit in the general fund revenue all fiscal year until it is closed to free cash, and then in order to appropriate free cash, we need a town meeting vote. By passing this, they would go into a separate fund, and you can spend throughout the fiscal year. You wouldn't have to wait until free cash is certified and town meeting vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this amendment only? So, we're talking about the change in the amount? Okay. Is this about changing, about the amendment for the amount?
As much as the previous questions. I'm Bill McGark from Cinder Hill Path, and my question is, the amendment would lower the amount that the Conservation Commission can spend, but the money that they're going to be taking in through fees and such, I imagine that wouldn't affect that. So, my question goes to what happens to the excess money accumulated in the fund regardless of whether they can spend it? Does it go, does it remain and grow, or does it go back to the general fund?
Would you care to speak to that?
So, if this article passes tonight, all the funds stay in the 53E and 1/2 revolving fund, and they do not leave the fund. They're cumulative year to year, they do not go to the general fund, they do not close to free cash. The only way they would ever be brought back to the general fund is if we took a town meeting vote to rescind the 53E and 1/2, and then at the end of that fiscal year, we would close the funds back out to the general fund.
Is there any projection on how that money will grow over time? How much money are we talking about?
I think that's beyond this amendment at this point, so let's hold that question because we can bring it back up, so. So, let's, if there's no more discussion about this amendment, okay, this requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Opposed? Okay, I'm going to need a count. Oh, wait a minute, let me see. I'm going to ask to do that vote again. All those in favor, please, in favor, raise your cards. Please lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The amendment passes by majority, so now we're going to return to the original motion with the adjusted amount of $7,500. That's what we're talking about now. So, I believe there was another question talking about, yes, sir.
After the, Madam Moderator, after the $7,500 spending cap is reached, it seems likely that additional money is going to accumulate in the fund. My question would be, is there a projection for how much money that's going to be, and would there be a process for reallocating it back to the general fund?
Mr. Ellis, would you care to respond?
As Ms. Yates mentioned, the fees have fluctuated significantly year to year. We project roughly $4,700 a year going into this fund, and as I mentioned before, nothing will go back to the general fund until this is rescinded.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Madam Moderator, Lakeville is a town of ponds, and by definition is therefore a great deal of wetlands. I worked many years ago in a field where we probably couldn't we probably couldn't get any consultant to do anything for less than $2,500. But we always needed their stamp of approval, uh, to have some validation of what we were working on. Even if it was just going in front of the Concom, I would have to get my ducks in a row. So I can appreciate, uh, how difficult wetlands, uh, regulations can be. And I would like to arm our, um, Concom with enough money to be able to speak intelligently when we come up with developments that may affect the overall town.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Ms. Yates, we also need you to fill out another form. So when you're done speaking, could you please come up to the stage and grab the form?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think I need to tell anybody how much developments come into Lakeville. I don't know if you realize that 33 and 1/2% of the entire town of Lakeville is either wetland or open water. In the past, we've had some help from DEP, but I have to tell you, the help is really, really hard to get right now from DEP. Southeast Regional Office covers 88 cities and towns. We recently had a denial. And when they came to check out the, um, piece of land that we were denying a house to be built, um, they told us, "Well, it will take 75 days to make a decision, and you're lucky if you get it in 75 days." So we don't get the help from DEP. And we need specialized help on Concom. We need not town council, no offense, uh, but we need professional wetland scientists. We need engineers. Um, even with our groundwater in Lakeville, our whole town has... We have private wells. We have to watch out for our groundwater. Sometimes even writing an order of conditions is really difficult to get everything covered. We have a part-time agent. I try to help a lot myself. And there's one thing I just can't help but not say. The vote from the Finance Committee was not unanimous. And the vote from the Board of Selectmen was not unanimous either. So we're just looking for a little bit of help, professional wetland scientists, like Mr. Scott said. It's not cheap. And we're just looking for a little bit of help. And it doesn't seem to me like an average of $4,700 a year is going to break the budget.
Thank you. Ms. Yates, could you please, um, approach...
Yep.
Ms. Candido?
I'd like to respond. Um, I don't believe that the Conservation Commission has ever been denied any funds if they've asked for it. So the argument, while compelling, um, and true and right on about, uh, needing money for developing to... For ensuring safe development, there has been no ask for funds that has not been provided, to my knowledge. And I would ask the, uh, the Finance Director or the, uh, or the Town Administrator to correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Sukforth, would you care to respond to that?
In the... The... The year that I've been here, I don't... There hasn't been a request. I can't speak for years prior. Um, I think some of, uh, the inks from the Select Board and Finance Committee came from, uh, flexible spending. Um, my thought and the Finance Director's thought was if we did a free cash article, we could, um, appropriate money tomorrow morning. Um, with this, this is not effective till July 1, 2026. Um, and then we would rely on, um, administrative fees to come in. So if there's no filings, then there's no fees. And there's a potential we wouldn't be able to spend until this time next year. Um, so I think... I don't want to speak for the Select Board and Finance Committee, but I think they'd be supportive of a free cash article in the future, um, if the Conservation Commission wants to access more funds.
Thank you. Ms. Yates?
For a free cash article, we have to go back to the town every single time. We're facing challenges every single day. It would be nice to have a little bit of money so that we can take care of it and not have to wait for a town meeting or even, like I say, town council is not that helpful. We need professional wetland people and engineers to... Especially for drainage and things that are coming along. We just had the same situation with the fire station where, um, the drainage that came through, it was a town project, and the drainage came through wasn't adequate. So we ended up taking some money. We can take money out of our state fees for, um, doing a peer review. And we did that for the town to make sure that that drainage for the fire station was adequate because it was only looking at covering a two-year storm. And we probably had a two-year storm last week. So we're just asking for a little help so we can make our day-to-day decisions because the development is not just coming once a year. It's coming every day.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that's okay. We're now going to go to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes by majority vote. Article 5. Now, this is a citizen's petition. Town Council has advised that this article is non-binding. Removing health insurance midway through the... Through term can only be changed by a special act filed with the state legislature. As this step is not included in the article and is outside the scope of the article, the result of this vote is a non-binding and no legal steps may be taken. However, the outcome of the vote, should we decide to pursue, may serve as an advisory to the Select Board on how people feel about this issue. I'll now ask Town Council to further explain.
Thank you through you, Madam Moderator. Uh, so the procedures for establishment of health insurance for town officials is set forth in Chapter 32B of the General Laws. And what that statute provides is there's a certain role for town meeting and there's a certain role for the Select Board. With regard to town meeting, town meeting gets to decide whether or not that the town will accept the statute and provide group health insurance for its public officials. But once it makes that decision, then individual decisions as to what insurance to provide, how much to provide, who to provide it to, is something that is exclusively within the jurisdiction of the Select Board. So it's... It's a separation of powers issue. The legislative branch, town meeting, gets to decide in general terms, yes, we want public officials to have group health insurance, but then the administration of that program is an executive function, and that is held, um, to the Select Board. And so without a special act of the legislature, town meeting would not have the authority to say, "We do not want to have elected officials, um, receive health insurance" because that is something that is provided for in the statute that the Select Board has the prerogative to either allow or not allow. And so by voting here this evening, you would be sending a message to the Select Board that, yes, you wish for the Select Board to continue providing health insurance to part-time elected officials? Or no, you wish the Select Board to stop that practice? And then it would be up to them to decide how to, um, implement your recommendation, if at all.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo. So I now need the petitioner to make the motion.
Uh, Michael Smith, Dunham Pond Road. Madam Moderator, I make a motion to vote to see if the town will vote, notwithstanding Chapter 32B of the General Laws or any other general or special law to the contrary. Part-time elected officials in the town of Lakeville who receive a salary or stipend shall not be eligible for participation in the town's contributory health and life insurance benefit plan affected 3126.
Thank you. I need a second. I hear a second. Mr. Smith, would you care to speak to this?
Give me a place to focus. Steph, you give me one second?
Mm-hmm. He's not at it yet, but I'll... Make sure that when you speak into the microphone, you're speaking close to it. And loudly, yes.
Are we okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Smith. Uh, I'm going to move this. I don't like talking to... Can I point it out this way?
Speaking this way is the way you should... You speak to the moderator?
Oh, I speak to you. Okay. And then you can speak to them.
Exactly.
Okay.
They'll hear you.
Okay. Once again, my name is Michael Smith. My family and I have been living in the great town of Lakeville for 25 years. Just to give a little background, I was a Parks Commissioner for three years and presently on the, um, Capital Expenditures Committee. So you're probably wondering why I went out and got a 115 signatures to discuss this topic. Um, I think, uh, Madam Chair said it all is that we got a lean year coming up. And I think lean is being generous. Um, we have a lot of, um... A lot of expenses are going to be coming up next year. As you know, we have Old Colony, which may affect the budget or not. We're negotiating some contracts with, um, with the teachers and, uh, other unions. We have the cost of living going up, as you know, health benefits, salaries. Um, so I decided, um, that I would help by looking at our, uh, preliminary budget last year and to understand what's going to happen this year. I, um, I've created and managed budgets from $3 to $70 million, so I enjoy looking at numbers. And, um, so I did a review on, on last year's and this... We haven't proposed the new one yet this year. But I always look to see if there's any low-hanging fruit that doesn't affect the town's operations. Um, so when I had found out that we had paid our part-time elected officials health insurance, I did know a little bit about it. I didn't know... I knew the Select Board got it. I didn't realize there were, um, six other people who got it. So I went... I spent a lot of time with our town accountant and town manager and Director of Human Resources to try to understand it better. Um, so when I went to budget and to look at it, all I saw was the... In our budget that we approve every year, I saw a line that said stipends. Stipends is the salaries that... Or the monies that we give, uh, these town-elected officials to perform their duties, which is great. I don't have an issue. But then I asked, well, where are the other benefits? Where are the insurance benefits? Where do they go? And it was pointed out to me that it gets put up, up where the employee benefits are. So it's... It's hard to... It's hard to see that. So when we come to town meeting and we vote on compensation for the part-time elected officials, I would prefer in the future to have it lowered down so that if they are receiving benefits or other stipends, that we have an opportunity to vote on that. So I'm hoping in the future that happens.
Stick to this one, though.
I know, I know. I never stay on track.
Stay on track.
I apologize.
Okay.
So when I got deeper into it, I noticed that, um, there were 11 people on it. And when I looked at the cost, I said, "Well, how did we come up with this cost?" So if you look at the... Flyers that we passed out in the front, see if everyone has it? If everyone has it? You will see... You will see in the front page, what it shows is our part-time elected officials who are eligible for stipend and town insurance buyback. Let me explain to you what a buyback is. Is that if the town officials... The town officials elect not to take the insurance from the town, then we pay them $5,000 for not taking it, which is what they offer the employees, just so you know. So we have... My opinion, we have... We have part-time elected officials who have full-time jobs, who have access to insurance. And being that they get the insurance somewhere else, we're paying them $5,000 for not taking it. We're also, um, offering health insurance benefits to all, um, at a reasonable rate where they pay... Two of them paid 25% and the new, uh... The new formula is that they pay 35%. But the bottom line, the figure after their... After their participation is that we're paying pretty close to $23,000 out of our pocket for anybody who collects the insurance. And remember, we're paying $5,000 plus their stipend, if you want to call it a stipend, for not taking the insurance. So quickly, I don't want to spend hours on this, but if you looked at the Select Board, it shows you their stipend of 49 for the chair, 45. It shows you who's taking the buyback amount. So they're really getting close to $10,000 for being part-time elected official in this town. If you go down to the Board of Health Chair, If you go down to the Board of Health Chair, Board of Assessors, it shows you what their stipend is that we approve every year. It shows you their buyback amount, which they get. So Board of Health Chair receives $7,000. And the others get $5,000 added to it. Now, we have two people on the assessors who do receive the health insurance. Plus, they receive the $1,500 for their salary. That, as I said before, if you look at the cost, it's costing, the health insurance cost per month is $1,931, and that's with a 65-35 split. So that's over 28 months. So their term ends in 2028. If they continue to keep it, it's going to be $54,000. Now, this is a lot of money, folks. And they have the right to do this, just so you know. Town Council said Chapter 32B allows them to take the town insurance without town approval. Now, nothing in 32B says that they have to take it. Very easy to say, you know what? We got some lean times coming up. We decide that we don't want to take it. Because, you know, we're talking about just this previous year, about $140,000. That's a lot of money for the town. That's a lot of money.
Thank you. Oh, you have more, I'm sorry.
Can I?
Yes, yes, I thought you were done.
No, 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 sorry. So I did a, I spent the better part of about six months on this. I did a financial, I did a financial analysis on this. I also did a 10-year forecast if we continued to do what we're doing. I surveyed about 117 towns in the state of Massachusetts by either calling them, looking at their budgets, looking at newspaper articles to see, you know, maybe I'm crazy. Maybe this is just normal. Well, it's not normal, folks. It's not even close to normal. Starting in 2015, a lot of the towns who did provide insurance, the Select Board decided that, that we can't do anymore because the cost of insurance has just gone up. Right after COVID, it was the same thing. Now, there's two, one, two, three options here. One, all the Select Boards in the state of Massachusetts who did have insurance and don't are the ones who decided that they shouldn't get it. There are other towns, if you look on the back of there, you will see an analysis of towns. And this is just a small portion, folks.
Mr. Smith, respectfully, I think we need to stay on track for this town and not go into what all of the other towns doing, except that you can say generally, you said other towns are not doing it.
Okay.
Right.
So we're one of few who offer this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. So yes. So my issue is, and I'll cut it and then I'm sure you'll ask questions, is that we cannot afford to do this anymore. We just can't. As far as this town goes, if everybody continues to do what they're doing and there's a great, there's a great possibility that they all take the town insurance with the increases every year, I did analysis, you see it, of just 6 and 9%. You knew it, you know it's going to go much higher, but I wanted to be conservative. But we're talking about if everyone took it, you're looking over the next 10 years between, depending on the increase, between $3.5 and $5 million. That's a lot of money, folks. Now, understand that these figures I get, I went through with the town accountant and town manager. I did it myself and I had them put in a spreadsheet and try to figure it out. But you can see, if only two people took it, how much it cost over the 10 years with just a minor increase. So like I said, folks, I'm very concerned about this budget, as I'm sure everyone is. I do not want to see any cuts at all as far as, as far as our employees go, any cuts in services on the Capital Expenditures Committee. We may have no money to do improvements depending on how the budget comes out. So I, I know that this is non-binding, which is correct. But there's nothing, as I said, there's nothing in 32B that says they can turn it down. There's nothing in 32B that says if this is presented properly at the Budget Town Meeting that we can turn it down then and say we don't approve the budget because we don't want this in there. So there are options here, folks. I just want to give the Select Board, but by the way, I know everyone, they're great people. This isn't a personal thing. They work hard, they're wonderful people. But at some point, someone's got to stand up and say, hey, this needs to end. Because, you know, we had an opportunity last year to talk about it. I know it was brought up by a previous selectman who wanted to put it as a warrant, but it never went through as a warrant. 2018.
Mr. Smith.
Okay.
I think you've said everything and you said it.
I just, you know, I spent so much time.
I don't want you to undermine what you're saying, because you stated it very clearly.
So, so basically, folks, this needs to end. Okay? This is a shot across the bow from me to let you know what's happening, to let them know what's happening. And even though it says 316, I say vote for it and let them decide if they should end it by this next budget year. Or they have every right to do it by 316. All people have to do is say no. So please, on this, on my article, please vote yes. There'll be other amendments, I'm sure you'll listen to, but they'll all still have substantial ramifications over the next few years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have Mr. Scott approaching a microphone.
Madam Moderator, I'm wondering how long we've had this policy in the town of Lakeville?
Ms. Candido, do you know about the date?
It predates me moving here. I don't know the exact date. We don't, I don't think we have the records, but it was.
Oh, Mr. Smith has the date when it started?
Yeah, we reached out to Rita Garbutt. She said when she started, it was back in the mid-'90s, that it was, that it was in effect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, since it's non-binding, if we don't approve it as outlined by Mr. Smith, the Select Board still has the opportunity to take some type of action and bring it back to town meeting independent of how we vote.
That is correct.
So, you know, I think Mr. Smith has done a great job shedding the transparency on the problem. But what escapes me right now is how the selectmen are going to move forward with or without approval at this meeting and come up with a solution because it sounds like it's very complex. And I hate to take things away from people. I understand healthcare is an escalating cost, but maybe there's a compromise somewhere in here that the Select Board could come up with as we go forward. And that, right now, the simple question is, are we going to approve or not approve? I, I just am depending on the Select Board to analyze it in depth and come up with a recommendation at next town meeting and not necessarily this budget cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Ms. Candido, would you care to respond?
Madam Moderator, through you.
Through, closer.
The Select Board discussed this at our last town, our last meeting. And the biggest objection during the conversations about this was just taking away people's benefits in the middle of a year. It was something that most of us found very unpalatable. So regardless of the vote here today, I will take it back for a vote of the Select Board. And we will vote, but I will not take it before the Select Board and make the motion to remove people's insurance in the middle of the year. It would be at the end of their term.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Constant.
Larry Costin, 45 Freetown Street. Actually, to the Chair's point is that during the conversations that we've had, and I agree as a whole with Mr. Smith's proposal, what I disagreed with him publicly in the meeting was taking away something that was offered. When whoever was elected, this was something that was offered to them. They were aware of it when they ran for office, they ran for office, they were given this benefit. To take it away in the middle of their term is not fair. My proposal, which because this is a moot point, I'm not going to make an amendment, but my, my thought was that we change the date. We say, okay, at the end of, or a new position come in, we will no longer offer it. But we can't take it away from somebody. Health insurance is a hard thing to get. Affordable health insurance is near impossible. So to take it away from someone who was offered is not fair. As a citizen and a taxpayer here, I don't think it's the right thing for us to do to the people that are stewards. So I unfortunately would say we vote no on this because there's no need to make an amendment, I believe.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Louise Richard, 13 Lakeside Ave. I have a couple of statements or questions. My first problem with this article, even though it's not really coming up.
Please speak closer to the microphone. Thank you.
I feel like I'm on top of it. My first problem is that it says part-time elected official. I didn't realize that a Select Board member is part-time. They're, they're a Select Board. They get called all the time, all over, same as finance, even if they're only meeting once. That's the position. And so that I have a problem with that. And then as soon as that came up for me, it was Lillian, the town clerk. She's an elected official, the last thing, and she's a full-time employee.
She's full-time, yes. This does not apply to her.
But there's no part-time elected officials. They just do their job. It's not part-time. They're elected to do the position. And then my only other statement would be, I'm a retired town employee. So you have to be vested for a certain amount of time. Do these elected, part-time elected positions become vested after 10 years?
Ms. Candido?
No, we don't get vesting because we would have to be over a certain threshold to be vested.
Right.
And we're not vested.
Okay, so that wouldn't even qualify you. All right, thank you. That's my only thing. I just don't want somebody that falls in between the crack. They're an elected official, like the town clerk, and then all of a sudden, it's not really a part-time job. I know it's only so many hours, but they're elected to do the job, not like, oh, one hour, that's it. Some of these meetings go on for hours. And then they have to go to other places. So I think we need to have respect for the positions that we're electing them to. They're not fun positions. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Noel Rillo, Lakeville. I've lived here.
Close to the microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Better, okay. So I've lived here just about 13 years and this year is, is, I've attended all of these meetings and this year is the most serious one that I'm getting from everyone in terms of the finances of this town. So it seems that, you know, I mean, we're all hearing about the fire station, Old Colony. There's so many things that are affecting the budget. And I know that health insurance is, you know, it's a very personal thing. And I agree with, you know, Dick Scott, I don't like to take anything away from anyone either, you know? But I will say that there are many people in town on fixed budgets and we all, I know I have to look at my budget every month. And I feel like there are times when I have to make adjustments. And I think that as a town, we have to look at everything. And I'm sorry, but right now, we're looking at that, we're looking at it. And we have to make some hard decisions. And, and it may be not taking it away before the end of one's term. I have heard talk about at the end of one's term. I don't know how it's all going to flesh out, but, you know, and I'm sorry that we have to be discussing this. But we do, we do.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Crystal Lang, Bedford Street. I just have a couple of questions. If you say you don't want insurance, do you still get the $5,000? Or can you just say, no, I don't want the $5,000 either?
Ms. Candido?
So the $5,000 number is not the number everyone gets. That's for a family plan. You would have to have a qualifying family, like, you know, young children, et cetera. The other plan is, what is it, $1,200?
In the microphone?
It's $1,200. What is it, 25?
25.
25, sorry. So 2,500. So to answer your question, yes, someone could say, I don't want either.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one more question.
Yes.
I know nobody wants to take away anybody's insurance, but if you have a full-time job, you can go to your HR department and say, I have extenuating circumstances. And all you have to do is bring in a letter and say, I need insurance. Just throwing it out there.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, next.
Hi, Bob Pallucci. It seems like I am the longest sitting service, sitting elected official at this time, so I kind of got asked to come up and say a few things on behalf of all the people here. I want to start off by letting some people know, this is not a Lakeville policy. This isn't a, this is from the state. I'm just going to read this quickly. I'm going to try to keep it as fast as I can, but in Massachusetts, and I didn't write this, this is off the state website, the state distinguishes the Board of Selectmen, Assessors, and Health because they are historically the chief executives and administrative bodies of the town government, handling essential and distinct functions. This structure is rooted in the state's traditional decentralized system of governance where executive power is shared rather than consolidated under a single office. Okay? While other boards, such as planning boards and school committees, have significant authority over specific functions, the Board of Selectmen, Assessors, and Health have a more foundational role in the town governance. Shared executive power, the mass system is set up to share the power with the Select Board, sharing with the Board of Health and the Assessors. No single office controls any, all the executive functions reflecting on the state's historic emphasis on direct democracy and decentralized power. The responsibilities of these three boards, Executive, Administrator, and Select and Assessors, are arguably the most fundamental and indispensable to the day-to-day operations of the town. Okay? I get definitions of what everyone's responsible for. I'm not going to bother you with it because it would be here all along. But I'm going to take a minute and I want to fill you in on a few things. A quick history. People asked if we got vested or any of that stuff. Now, before I got on the board, and I believe it was 17, 18 years ago, maybe it stopped, the selectmen and these three boards, they got paid enough that they did qualify. So these people could work for 10 years, get a pension. We're paying people pensions. And if they were here 10 years, they got their health insurance and they kept it forever. Okay? And a lot of them went to other towns, got a job for a couple of years, a full-time job working in the office. And then, then their pension got based on their top years of earnings that we are paying for still to this day. So, so that's how it was before. Before I got on, they took away, there's no more pensions, there's no more of that stuff. And you only can qualify to buy in to the insurance while you're on a board and at the same rate as the other employees of the town. Okay? You'll find out that many of the people on these boards are or have been self-employed. And to be honest, being able to participate in the health group plan at the same as other employees is really helpful. But to be fair, the flip side is, being self-employed, we are available whenever needed. I will just talk about myself. Others can get up and speak for themselves if they choose. But as they do, please ask yourself, if you have been employed five, 10, 15 years somewhere and then got called into a meeting like this to defend your worth, how hard it would be for a lot of people. I'm getting older, I don't care that much anymore. I got elected on the Board of Health 15 and a half years ago during the floods. I went to Town Hall the next morning. I got sworn in and went there every day to help people get back in their homes, all the condemned houses. I was able to do that, get them out of hotels. That's because I was self-employed and I was able to go down there as needed. And then one more page left, guys. And then my board members, they had... So I spent over three months going out every day while we were in between agents and was happy to do so. Went to the office every single day. We were, at one point, we had three and a half months, we didn't have an agent. I was able to go there every day, get a list of who needed an open hole, who needed a final, who needed a finished grade, review plans and sign off so people could get their compliance and close on their houses or get their financing back from the bank. Again, being self-employed, I'm able, I have the ability to do that, but also this is a benefit for somebody who is self-employed that would have a very hard time getting health insurance. Everyone on these boards does it to the best of their abilities that I know. In the 15 years I've been on, I have watched all these people and I don't question their sincerity or their, or their commitment to their job. Okay? A lot of these positions, like the Board of Health, you need vast qualifications and honestly, long-term commitment. When I got on, I was a young guy, believe it or not, ready to tackle the perceived problems that I thought I knew. I was lucky enough to have Bill Gavi on the board to show me how to do things, how to do this job and find out why things were done as they were. Now I'm the old guy with two younger board members. And I hope I have been a good example and I know they are ready to take over in a couple of years when I retire. If you lost these people who live in town, understand the challenges, whether it's the conditions at the shorefront communities we deal with or you spend, you would end up spending more money than all of us together just to hire one engineer to give the variances and do the stuff we do. And I know when you do the math, five years, 10 years, 100 years, it adds up. But right now, we're looking at, I think it's $120,000, $130,000 for 11 people. I mean, that's not each, that's all of us combined. We paid a planner more than that, who got insurance and a pension and I won't go into it, but wasn't from the town. Tried doing a cluster zone plan, didn't understand that we're not Norton, we don't have town water. We don't have septic. I could get into this stuff all day.
Mr. Pallucci, stay within the scope, please.
I'm just saying that it would cost way more than this. You don't get people from town when you, when we do hire people. And I really think that whether people think so or not, there's value to what the 11 of us do every day. And I appreciate. And I appreciate that woman saying that she agreed.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Brian Day, Alders Pond Drive. This might shock some of you, I'm not going to give an opinion tonight. I just want to get a clarification because in February or March, when this topic came up on the select board, previous town council guidance was that the select board does in fact, on its own, independently, have the ability to change that plan and say that at the end of a term, the next person elected in will not be granted this benefit. And that the only reason, let's, let's pretend for a moment that this citizen petition did have the correct legal language to send it up to the State House. That is only necessary, as I understand, twofold. One, if we wanted to end their benefits midterm. Or two, to prevent a future select board from coming back and saying, nah, we didn't like what they did, let's just give it back to them. It would have to come back to town meeting to change it again. So that's just, that's just what I want to make sure we're clear with everybody here, that select board could say, we vote to get rid of this at the end of somebody's term when the next person comes in. But if we want to cut it off in the middle or prevent just the select board from bringing it back later, we have to go to the State House for special legislation. Unless something's changed in the last eight, nine months.
Mr. Corbo, would you care to respond to that?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator to the Speaker. That is correct. Right now, the select board has the authority to grant elected officials health insurance. They also have the ability to take that insurance away. However, it can only be at the end of a term. It cannot be in the middle of a term. So the, the purpose of having special legislation would be to do something different, either to have it taken away earlier than the end of a term or to prevent the select board from being able to put it back once they take it away.
Thank you. Yes.
Jim Leary, Eugene Circle. So for the last couple decades, I've served on for-profit and not-for-profit boards. I spent some of that time recruiting board members. And one of the things I'm very mindful of is that if you can't recruit top talent, you don't always get the desired result. To get top talent, you need to incent those who are going to serve. And I would express the concern that this is not only for the upcoming fiscal year. This will be in perpetuity unless that resolution is changed going forward. So, thank you, that is my point.
Thank you. Ms. Mankowski.
Barbara Mankowski, Seventeen Johnson Drive. And I would just like a point of clarification. It's my understanding that there was a time that finance committee and perhaps other boards have the same ability to get health insurance through the town in business. Part-time employees generally do not receive health insurance benefits unless that's just part of the job description. I'm not opposed to it. But I do think we need to have a policy because I can promise you in retirement, I would love to get health insurance and I will continue to try to run for office if that were an opportunity. So I do think that if there are boards that need that, that, you know, Mr. Pelucci's points are very well taken. And there are jobs that do need to have those benefits because we, these volunteer boards that we have, the people who don't work on these boards have absolutely no idea about the time that goes into it and the commitment of the people that do the work. That having been said, we should have some, I, I just think about the potential exposure if a board was to say, we all want to vote for ourselves to get health insurance. So I would just ask the select board to please consider making sure that that can't happen at some point because we haven't examined the exposure, the financial exposure for that case if it were to happen.
Thank you. Yes. Your turn.
Kim Borg, Baker Lane. I apologize for my voice. So it's my understanding that most of you, if not all of you, are currently, are all the board members within the town, are full-time employees and/or own their own business. So at any point in time, that would be a qualifying event if they lost their insurance to get insurance at their employer. Right?
This, in this, I, I don't think we can answer that. That's a hypothetical, depending on the individual.
Well, it's a qualifying event. Your employer.
If you're employed, it's a.
Just cut you off.
If you're employed, if your company, yes, but keeping within the scope of what we're discussing now.
I don't know that any, many part-time employers get offered health insurance. I appreciate you don't always work part-time, but you do all have full-time jobs. So you're not working this job full-time as well as your full-time job. Not to say you're not doing an amazing job. But the cost of the town is significant. And as everybody keeps saying, we need the money in the town. Put that money towards the OC project, in my opinion. But I definitely think it's a good thing to look at.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr.?
In listening to the comments, I think I heard that we wouldn't be taking it away based on what the select board chair said from everybody, so that, that's reassuring. And if we did make a change, there would be a lot of discussion about how we would move forward. One of the things that, that industry at large has done is, is capped how much the employer, and I'm going to define the employer as the town of Lakeville for these positions. And it seems to me that at some point, given the significant concern about the escalating cost, that there might be a mechanism whereby you could cap it at some point. And perhaps council can say whether or not that makes sense or not. But I, I guess what I'm leading up to is, if the underlying concern is escalating costs, perhaps what we should be talking about is how do we rein in those costs to the town? And that the employees would have to wrestle with those other options of, is the town the best deal? Or is working someplace else or going on the mass safety net? I'm just throwing that out as a, could you cap it and solve both, both the problems?
The question is technically out, what you're saying is outside of what we're talking about here, but Ms. Candido does want to make a response.
There was one point that you made that I think I can clarify. Whatever the boards get is what the town employees get. So there's no difference between the two. So I think that's what you were alluding to at the beginning. Didn't, didn't follow you at the end, but I followed that at the beginning. Yeah. So I just wanted to, to let you know that's, that's statutory, that we can't separate from the town. It has to be the same.
Thank you. Yes.
Rich LaCamera, Thirty-two Old Pot House Road. Just a couple of questions, clarifications. When did town council bring this to the attention of the board, that it was a non-binding vote?
Mr. Corbo? And Mr.? You want the exact date?
Thereabouts.
Through you, Madam Moderator. It was during the review of the warrant process. We wouldn't have known before this petition warrant article was put onto the warrant.
Well, the question then is that according to the, um, the timeframe of opening the warrant and reviewing the warrant and so forth, petition article was, was submitted. And town council was supposed to review them on September 20th. So did you get back to the board?
But this, this was a point of clarification. This was a citizen's petition, so it wasn't submitted by the town.
I'm talking the whole warrant.
I'm, could you repeat that? I'm not quite sure what.
There was a process that the board followed, having to do with what's required for timeframes of the warrant and the approval of the warrant and so forth and so on. And one of those processes is for town council to review the warrant before the Board of Selectmen approve it. And that was September 20th. I have the document right here for anybody to see.
Right, but what?
So my, my simple question is, when did town council tell the town, the town that it was a non-binding vote?
When, when we were reviewing the warrant. When a citizen presents a citizen's petition, it must.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the petition.
Well, then you're going outside the scope of this question. We're talking about the, the health insurance issue.
Okay.
And, and how, so I'm, I'm, how is your question relevant to the, the motion on the floor?
It's relevant to because the town, the warrant, the guideline came out for the town a week ago. Okay? And in there, it said this is a non-binding, non-binding vote. I didn't know that. Was never discussed at the board's selectman's meeting that I'm aware of.
Because it was missing language. This has happened before where we've had missing language and we've alerted the town at the meeting that, and sometimes it just gets, it's postponed indefinitely because they don't have the correct language. At any point, somebody could postpone this indefinitely and it would stop. Or we could go for a vote, but we must make, towns vote all the time. Yes or no to non-binding things.
I'll ask my question again, Madam Moderator. When, I'll ask any member of the Board of Selectmen, when they found out that this was a non-binding vote?
Is there someone on the board who would care to respond to that?
Last week.
Don't you think there's a problem with that when the council was supposed to review it on September 20th?
It, it would not have been corrected. I think, Mr. Corbo, would you care to, this is a citizen's petition. So there is no ability to correct a citizen's petition once it's been submitted.
Nobody's talking about that.
Oh, okay. I, I don't think we have a response.
So you're saying the Board of Selectmen found out last week?
That this was non-binding?
Right.
Correct.
What about the petitioner that submitted the, uh, the article?
When we went through it, we alerted the petitioner.
Which was last week.
Yes.
So he's done all his work, you know, for the past few months to get this to town meeting for a vote. So my, my other question is, is that the, um, the Board of Selectmen, and actually it was on March 31st, the minutes. Brian Day, Plumb Selectmen, put it on the agenda and he brought it up because he wanted it addressed.
Can you speak more closely to the microphones? Thank you.
He wanted it to be addressed by the board. And so the chairman at the time said, oh, well, we'll move it and put it on a warrant article for the annual town meeting. That never happened.
And to clarify, I don't know if everybody heard, you said that was in March?
It was March 31st.
Okay. Would a member of the board?
Why wasn't it discussed any further? And now we have all these people that have come to this meeting with the intention of voting for this article.
Ms. Candido.
I was not chair at that.
Corine was chair.
You are correct. Mr. Day did bring that up at one of our meetings, that he wanted to put it on a future agenda. Town election happened and I'm not saying that it wasn't going to be coming on for future discussion. We just haven't discussed it for this budget cycle yet.
No, but you said, quote, and it's in here, that we'll put it on the annual town meeting. Quote.
But this is the special town meeting.
I'm talking about the annual town meeting back in June.
Back in, back in there, and it did not happen, so.
So my question is that, um, town meeting doesn't have to vote, the elimination of these health insurance for the open people, is that correct? Have you asked town council that?
I didn't hear the question.
Oh, you're saying, to clarify, you're saying that this town meeting does not need to vote on this at all?
No, but I hope to vote for it to get, send a message to the board.
Right, that's why we're allowing this even though it's nonbounding, non-binding. So we have, we can stop? And if that's, if somebody postpones, makes a motion to postpone it definitely?
I'm not asking to do that. My question is, is, is the Board of Selectmen have the authority right now to make changes to the health insurance?
At, at this town meeting?
No.
Oh.
At one of the selectmen's meetings.
At one of the select meetings, yes. I think that, that, they said that they could do that if they wished to, you know, to discuss it. But that's something that we, that's outside of what we're deciding right now.
Well, it's pretty important, Madam Moderator.
I, I'm not saying it's not important, but we're trying to decide the, this particular, the merits of this particular motion. If a member of the board, the select board wishes to respond, they may. But that, it's not, they're not compelled to respond to that.
Okay, just for clarification, there was no other part-time town officials that I've known in fifty years that was offered, was offered the health insurance. Only the Board of Health, the Board of Assessors, and the Board of Selectmen. So it's only eleven people. So there has not been any discussion about providing health insurance to those groups.
That's correct. This is just relevant to the eleven.
Madam Moderator, you were entitled to health insurance because we used to pay you $50.
I haven't gotten $50 since my dad, I lost it years ago.
That's correct. And that's why I was eliminated, so you couldn't be entitled to health insurance.
That's correct.
Right?
I'm here because I want to be. Not because of health insurance.
You never took it, that's right, Corin, you didn't.
He never took it.
But, you know, the other problem is that you've got thirty-nine part-time employees. Thirty-nine part-time employees that work nineteen hours a week in most cases. They're not entitled to health insurance because they don't work twenty hours a week. Now, if they worked twenty hours a week, they wouldn't health insurance. So those employees are not entitled to health insurance, yet these eleven town officials are. My last question is, I'll let it go. The stipend. Who determined the stipend, that they were eligible for?
So the stipend respectfully is outside of the scope of this article. We're not here discussing stipends. We're here discussing just their health insurance.
I meant the bonus that they don't take the health insurance.
The buyout?
The buyout.
The, okay, the buyout is different, yes. The buyout is optional. They can take it or not.
When was that decision made or approved by town meeting that they were going to get the $5,000 buyout?
I don't know if that was a town meeting decision. Ms. Candido, I think.
I believe I see the previous town administrator coming to the.
Yes, we're going to allow Ms. Garbit to respond to that. Mr. LaCamera, she's right behind you. Would you allow her to speak through the?
No, it was actually after she retired.
No.
Hi, Rita.
So would you allow her to respond?
Okay, just for information.
This is Mrs. Garbit.
Oh, yes, Rita Garbit, 102 Main Street. Back when I started as treasure collector, I did the budgeting.
In the mic.
I did the budgeting for health insurance. It wasn't even 1% of the budget. And then later in the late, uh, maybe, I started in ninety-three. Four or five years later, health insurance increased 20%. And every year, it kept increasing. And I'm pretty sure the selectmen voted when we accepted 32B for part-time officials to have health insurance. As the numbers kept skyrocketing, I mentioned to the selectmen, what if we offered a stipend? Employees would go. A buyout. We saved tens of, if not over $100,000 for, because it was over $20,000 a year, the town's portion. That's why the $2,500 for single, because the plan was $10,000. And $5,000 to save $15,000.
Thank you for that history.
Just one more question for town council. Can the selectmen eliminate the buyout?
Mr. Corbo?
Through you, Madam Moderator. That depends on the plan that they, that they choose. They can't just say, you know, the selectmen are not going to get the buyout. It has to be the same thing for, for everyone who gets the insurance. And that is typical when you have a, have a job that offers insurance. If you don't take the insurance, then you, you get a, a monetary amount instead. Whether or not the, the select board can not have that part of it only is something that they would have to talk with their insurance people about.
Insurance people. Okay, it's clear.
Thank you.
So I just want to sum it up, is that okay? Just to answer questions, it just has to do with my.
If it's a question, yes. If it's free, if it's giving new info, you know, new information, okay. But if you're repeating stuff that's already been said, we're good.
Nope, nope, nope. I'm not repeating anything.
Okay.
Okay. Just a few questions for council. When this all started, was there a town meeting approval for this, for them to reward themselves back in the nineties, that they could take it?
Could you define reward themselves?
I'm sorry. To, to, uh, to allow themselves to access the town's insurance for themselves. Did that need permission from the town before the 32B? That's my question. Was it a town vote?
Mr. Corbo?
Through you, Madam Moderator. Yes, it was. As I said at the very beginning, town meeting gets to vote whether or not to accept chapter 32B. Once the town votes to accept chapter 32B, part of that chapter is a provision that allows the select board to give health insurance to, um, part-time. allows the Select Board to give health insurance to part-time elected officials.
I, I, the reason I'm asking is because I couldn't find that vote, or, or when it was brought up. Because it, for that to happen, it would have had to been brought many years ago.
Yes.
Because they adopted the 30, I mean, they used the 32B back in the 90s.
Yes.
Obviously. But I can't find any record that the town voted on it at Town Hall. So that's, that's just number one. Number two, to be honest with you, I think I've achieved what I wanted to do, and that was to make, make everyone aware of the cost of this, what was going on. I'm glad it was the spirit of the discussion. Like Bob said, he's 100% correct, that these officials, including myself, who was in, we worked very hard. But, that, that doesn't mean that, that we need to receive insurance for it, because if you want more money for doing it, then ask for it on the budget. Just say, you know what, we, we should pay another 5,000 or 10,000 for us to do our jobs. Don't put it in insurance, because insurance leaves us a liability that's, as you see, that could be millions of dollars. If you think you should get 15 for being a assessor or whatever, then ask for 15 in the budget, and then we can approve whether you should get it or not. But, we, we got to stop hiding behind this 32B, think about this town singerly, what we're going through, and see how we can afford to do the things that we want to do to run the town. So please, let's figure out a way that we can do this, and let's bring it to the town every year, because it's our money, folks, at the end of the day. Thank you.
Yes.
Sherri Behr and Success, one circle. I want to take a little bit of the passion out of this, and I certainly agree that anyone who runs for town office, it's a volunteer job, you end up getting probably a dollar an hour at, at best, but you do it because you have passion. So let's take the passion out of this, and let's just talk about, I've heard a couple of times so far, and I do follow the, the budgets, the school budget and also the town budget, we have a lean year ahead. I believe we are headed for a fiscal cliff, in what I am listening to. So first of all, I have, my first question is, what does a lean budget mean, for this year?
That's...
And I know it's very preliminary, but I also know they're already working on it.
So that question is outside of the scope of this particular, would you agree, Mr. Corbo?
Okay, then I'll take that one second.
It's a great question to ask, what that means, and I think that maybe the Select Board in a future meeting may bring that up, but it's not, that's not...
It's kind of critical to this decision, in my mind.
I don't think that they could, I, I'm not sure if they could respond what the budget looks like, because that's not what they prepared to bring to this meeting. But, Ms. Candido, if, is, would you concur, or would you have something else to say?
I can't give you an exact figure right now, because we...
I'm sure you can.
Yeah, because we haven't even started our...
Way too preliminary, I get that.
New budget. But we are anticipating a lot of expenses. I know this is off-topic, but I just want to answer, we are experiencing a lot of, we're budget control that's going on within Town Hall, but there's contracts that will be negotiated, that will be very impactful.
Great, thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. First of all, we've got a number of things happening. First of all, we've got the old colony. My understanding is, even if Lakeville votes for, you know, on the, the new school, and the other communities vote yes, we're still going to be paying for it. So we don't know what's happening next Tuesday there.
Right.
The second thing is, we are building our fire station, and I'm glad we are. That being said, we haven't started paying for it yet, I don't think, in our taxes. Thirdly, the school budget, I'm trying to phrase this properly, the school budget is going to be a serious concern. So when I look at all of this, although I feel, feel for the health insurance, I feel more for the fact that we could be losing employees. Employees in the Town Hall, the library, God forbid, the senior center, and some of the other places that are very, very valuable, on top of school employees. So I, I take this back to not so much healthcare, insurance, but let's look at our budget, can we afford this? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Behr. Yes.
Maybe you don't need it, but I make a motion to call the vote.
Call the question. Okay, that is, we need to agree to that. So, all those in favor of calling the question, I'll raise your cards, you may lower them. Opposed, to continue? Okay, so now we are going to move immediately to the vote. This is a majority vote, and I think for posterity, it's worth actually counting the, this vote, just to see where people, how people fall. May I have my tellers up and ready? The rec, it's been pointed out, a point of order, that the Finance Committee was not asked for their recommendation. Thank you. Would the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And I would like that to be counted.
17?
21.
24.
Oh, I don't count to stage, though, do I?
No.
Okay.
12, I include the stage. Thank you, you may lower your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards.
5?
18?
7.
7.
Thank you. You may lower your cards. So the motion passes, I'm going to say it was 84, was it, did you have 84?
74?
To 37?
I'm just going to check the numbers, just to have it on the record.
74 to 77?
To 37, yeah, that's what I heard. Okay. So, the yeses were 77, 74, 74, and the noes were 37. So technically, this would pass. Okay, and we've mentioned several times that we have an old colony, regional, technical vocational, I'm getting it right, vote coming up next week, and so I would just like to remind everybody to make sure that you go out and vote for that, one way or the other. And if you need more information, go to the town's website, there is a, in the top bar, someplace that you can click and get more information about that. I need a motion to dissolve.
Barbara Lane?
Okay. And I have a second?
Closing the meeting.
There we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, opposed, none. Safe travels, everyone. And thank you for coming and getting a quorum. We appreciate that.